You're ready, sir.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At 7:00 PM, we'll call to order this meeting of the town council. First item of business is approval of the minutes of April 8th.
Motion to approve the April 8th Town Council meeting unless anybody has any comments or questions on it. Second?
The motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes. I omitted the roll call at the beginning of the meeting. We will take this vote. You will note by the vote that all five counselors are present. The vote then on the motion to approve the minutes of April 8th, Counselor Gollumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. The motion passes. The next item of business is approval of the minutes of April 12th, which was a joint meeting with the Budget Committee.
Motion to approve the April 12th Joint Budget and Council Meeting unless anybody has any questions or comments on that.
Second, motion made by Counselor Mataronis, second by Counselor Moore. Are there any comments? A roll call of that vote. Counselor Gollumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. Announcements. Are there any announcements that need to be made? Thank you. The department had report, that of the Public Works Department.
Motion placed in Public Works. March report on file.
Second?
Motion is made by Counselor Mataronis, second by Counselor Wallach to place on file any discussion. Roll call vote, Counselor Gollumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. Thank you. The next item of business is old business, item one. It's the South Shore Road Safety Plan filed by the Police Chief in response to concerns raised by Cokewood Smith. The young lady has been informed of the fact that we will not be addressing that matter this evening because the police chief is not present with us. And we will schedule that for our May 6th meeting. Any questions or comments regarding the, that matter or the police chief's report?
My only comment would be that, and I said this to you before, that I think we should think about how we, how we measure whether this has an impact. And so I'll ask, before the chief comes in front of us, I'll ask him to think about that.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah. Any other preparations for that discussion? Please make me aware of those and I'll pass those along as well. This, the next is a, old business two is a letter from FEMA confirming the updates necessary for the flood insurance rate map panel numbers and town code. You'll find attached to the letter from FEMA, a copy of our announcement of advertising for a public hearing on May 6th to accomplish that update. Are there any questions or comments regarding that, that process? All right. We, there's no action necessary until we have that public hearing next meeting. The next item is a draft of the ninth revision to Special Directive 5, which is an extension of the state of emergency in the town. I would entertain a motion to approve this revision.
So moved.
Second, motions made by Counselor Mataronis, second by Counselor Moore to approve the revision nine to the Special Directive. Any discussion? A roll call vote, Counselor Gollumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. Thank you. The motion passes. The next item is a copy of the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns Legislative Priorities and Positions for Discussion of Legislative Proposals that the council may wish to take. The administrator and I have gone through this and just wanted to highlight to you a couple of things that the, that the league is doing on our behalf as a collective group of municipalities. There are some municipalities for which some items are more important than others. But just to, just to give you a quick look at this, particularly on the issue of legalization of adult recreational use of marijuana. We've made a couple of points with the league and these have broad support within cities and towns. Specifically, we've, we've asked that cities and towns be able to opt out through their respective councils rather than what is now in the bills, which is a ballot referendum in what is an off year for elections. So what would happen is we would have to, as much as we did for the second referendum this year, we would have to schedule a referendum in November of '21 when there is not otherwise an election for the sole purpose of polling the community as to their desires to opt in or out of, well, if they don't opt out, they'll be opted in by the bill to opt out of this. I would propose that, and the, and the league is advancing the change that says, we would like cities and towns not go to the significant expense of a special election, rather their, their respective city and town councils be able to cast that vote. So it's not before us yet, but that is, that's what they're trying to have happen. The second thing that the Senate proposal does support, but the House version does not, is that the House version has no share in this revenue stream for the cities and towns. We believe that were this to pass, it requires significant local oversight and that we should receive a portion, 3% is what's been specified as a minimum, of the state sales tax. Oh. These are two of the measures that are, that the league is trying to advance on our behalf with this, with this bill. Or these bills. Any questions on that or comments?
If it's, if it's no weed, then do we need the second one for the tax? Do we still want to get the tax money if we opt out? Or are they kind of, they've got to run them both together?
Well, as you are aware about legislation, it is often a stew of various things that each participant gets to put something in. We are putting both of these items forward in an effort to say, these are both of concern to us. You're right. If it, if a community opted out, then it would be probably likely that the legislation, if it were to adopt that possibility, the legislation would specify that that community does not share. But that's, that's the, that's the legislature's business. What we're trying to put forward is things that mattered us. Spending money on a referendum that doesn't need to happen and not receiving any remuneration should we take on the significant oversight requirements of this.
Okay.
The only thing I would add is, I know there was, and this may have been in Senate 568. There was at least one bill that, that actually required a town to have three dispensaries. And that seemed unreasonable for a town like ours.
Yes, that was a model and I did not gain broad support, well, not, not lack of support, but it, it was not something we could codify into a, into a statement, but you're right. That is, in fact, part of Brian Daniels' testimony in both of these bills that will be happening because there is a, a kind of a one size fits all that says, every community in Rhode Island will have at least three or be able to have at least three, I guess I'd say at that one. And you're right, it's not, it's not a scalable thing. Rather, it says, since you're under 30,000, you need three. Or you're able to have three. That's a, yeah. Okay, we'll watch this unfold and, and may wish in the future to, to come in with something else. There are other matters in here, the, the local maintenance of effort requirement for schools and the fact that in, in previous difficult times, we have allowed there to be a reduction in the maintenance of effort. We, we support the idea that, that it, it should be our decision, not, not the legislature's. But we'll see how that, that turns out as well. We'd like there to be a, an opportunity to waive the minimum if, if, if that even were to arise. Any other questions or any questions at all on the, on the positions that the league has taken? All right, the next item of business is a copy of the PowerPoint pages that were used by the Acting Director of Administration for the State, Jim Thornton, in briefing a number of us on the American Rescue Plan. And it contains, for example, the numbers that we have come to understand from our various congressional representatives, our two senators and in our case Congressman Cicilliney, as to funds that are allocated at least in the process thus far. And indeed, it reflects the $340,000 allocation, which is, which is specifically for the town of Little Compton, as well as the $673,000 share of the Newport County allocation. So indeed, the total sum is a bit just slightly in north of $1 million. If it were to come as this is describing, we have reason to believe that's the case. What we don't know yet is what changes or refinements will be made to the uses to which this can be put. But we're quite confident that infrastructure improvements are definitely on the table and therefore the capital plans and other expressions of how we're going to spend those kinds of monies. We're remaining alert to the fact that rather than simply stopping, let's say with, with one mile of road repairs, we might go with two miles of road repairs, augmenting our highway budget with this kind of money. There's all sorts of other possibilities, again, mostly in the infrastructure area, but it's a, it's a great opportunity to do things that are one-time things that don't build in structural deficits for the future, where we spend money, say, on buying consumables that we need this year, next year, and the year after. So we'll, we'll be very careful with that process and bring those forward as we know them. What we've been cautioned about is, this is still, still young. We don't think we're going to get answers until as early, the earliest would be mid-May. And so we're, we're waiting with some bated breath on what, what's going to come forward as far as what it can be spent for. Questions on that?
Yeah, my only comment was, not a question, obviously, I think we're all happy that we're going to get a little bit. But I'd be interested on how they came up with the computation validation because Cranston's getting 42,797. Wallace getting 39,710,000. And Providence is getting 165,887. And we're getting 340,000. I mean, I think those numbers are kind of, and I just wonder how they, how they compute and what everybody's going to get, whether it's by the, and obviously, I'm not asking you this.
Yeah, I can't speak to that particular question as to the question of what share of Newport counties we, we received.
Right.
That was based on a per capita. That was a, you know, population thing. So that one is explainable, but the others, yeah, I don't have that explanation.
No, I wasn't actually. I just making a point that, yeah, it always seems I mean, I know those cities and towns are bigger than us, but we always, I know the state's always pounding on us about something. And then when it comes to giving us anything fiscally, we seem to be at, at the end of the rope all the time. And you've heard me say that before, so just tuning on again.
Okay. All right, the next item of business then is new business. And it's a communication, a series of communications from several Adamsville residents, Victoria Talbot, Susan Talbot, Edith Borden, all of whom are focused on a particular issue. And if you've had an occasion, those of us who do not live in Adamsville, to drive from the east, from Massachusetts into what used to be Abraham Manchester's front doorstep, you will realize that coming around that corner, if you're doing it every day and you're half asleep coming in, you come around that corner potentially significantly in excess of 25 miles an hour and you come upon the crosswalk, which is not well marked, especially coming from the east and is definitely a hazard. One of the things we did in response to the bringing, the citizens bringing this to our attention is we asked and, and got Senator Lou DePalma to come down and look at the area with us. By us, I mean myself and the administrator. And we got a very positive response there. We have since gotten a positive response from the DOT, specifically the customer service area where the traffic engineers have acknowledged that they've placed our crosswalk on the list of restriping for the season. Our, our objective now is to move the priority of that up the administrator as a couple of avenues that he's pursuing to make sure that we get ours striped sooner than just routine striping because of the nature of this, what we'll call a significant personnel issue. Another thing that the applicants or the citizens have told us about is the lack of sidewalks in the immediate vicinity of the crosswalk. And those sidewalks likewise have been scoped by us and by Senator DePalma. And we are bringing those to DOT's attention to prioritize that. I, looking at the list of folks who are with us, I note that Victoria Talbot is, and I don't know, Victoria, if you have something you'd like to add. We're very grateful for your bringing this to our attention and we're trying to get on it.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the, the quick attention that my letter got. I really, it was wonderful. And thank you to Tony for the communication, the email and getting Senator DePalma down there is great. And it is, it is dangerous. And I've talked to lots of local folks and I think a lot of them are even tuning in possibly tonight. And we're all anxious and hopeful that things get safer and more accessible for everybody there.
Well, it's, it's one of those things that if one doesn't drive it, which I don't on a regular basis, and, and you're looking for what would happen if I really didn't know there was a crosswalk around the corner. It's, it comes upon you pretty quickly and it's, and when you see it, you're not even really sure if the crosswalk can be get on top of it.
Well, thank you again. I, I appreciate the attention.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a question. Am I to understand then the, the sidewalk issue is also a state DOT that's on their plate?
It is. As it turns out, there is some, you know, the, the Manchester Front Port, if you will, still forms.
A little corner that sticks out, yeah.
Yeah, a sidewalk of sorts. And then you've got the portion that heads down toward the barn, which is not paved except for the little apron right at the crosswalk. So the idea would be that there'd be a, on a urgent basis, a sidewalk would be installed basically from the Talbot's building all the way down to the barn, restaurant, parking area entrance. And then on the other side, something similar to that. Is that, that right, Administrator? I don't.
That's correct.
Yeah. So both of those would be installed in a manner that would have a place that people could stand without standing in either dirt or uneven surfaces while waiting to cross.
Well, having chased a lot of baseballs across that street, I would support that.
And I will, I will comment. I drive through there daily and, you know, a lot of people do drive there, drive through there pretty quickly. And I think if there are sidewalks and the, you know, if things are restripped, it might help with traffic calming a little bit. I think if you see there are sidewalks and places for pedestrians, they might be, they might slow down a little bit while they're going through Adamsville because people do fly through there.
Amen. All right. The next item of business then is new business two to receive proposals for seasonal ported on units for the rec fields and the town transfer station.
Unfortunately, we have received zero bids.
Zero bids on that?
Yeah, I, I have informed the DPW director and he will, with your permission, seek out bids by calling the companies directly.
I think that would be a good idea. We're looking for someone who, to borrow a phrase, is number one in the number two business. And we, I'm surprised that we don't have any, any bids. We'll look forward to getting.
Carol, does this include any for the Sakanah Point? Yes.
No, because the Sakanah Point one was through DEM initially. And, and the extra was through the Beach Commission just because of the problems that happened last year. Presently, they're not planning on putting that one back unless something comes up.
Because it is squid season right now.
It's DEM you really need to talk to about that one.
Okay. Well, I know they put the one across from the launching ramp, so I can, maybe the town administrator could reach out to DEM, see if they're going to place those again by the launching ramp across the street.
Good. Thank you. Thanks, Counselor. The next item is to consider authorizing approval to renew the solid waste and recycling services agreement.
You missed one, Bob.
You missed, you missed the one for the lawnmower bid.
Boy, the maintenance department would be very upset with you.
Well, yes, I.
And all this along, I have received two.
Yes.
Uh, one is from TPC Turf Products out of Connecticut. And their total price is $25,482.06. And that is a ground master deck. It's one of the zero turnstiles. And then the other one is from Dave's Lawn Mower Repair in Westport. And that one is a 60-inch Kawasaki, I believe the same type. And that quote is $11,879.
Would there be a motion to refer these to the administrator and the Public Works Director to return with a, or to, to make a selection?
So moved.
Second. The motion is made by Counselor Gollumbeski, seconded by Counselor Mataronis to refer the matter to the Administrator and Public Works Director and to make the decision on purchase. Is there any discussion? Last for a roll call vote, Counselor Gollumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. Thank you. And thank you for correcting me on the order of events here. Now, consider authorizing approval to renew the solid waste and recycling services agreement. As you may recall, this is an agreement which comes to us two-year periods. It's a thick package. The quick, quick takeaway is, if kept $47 a ton for under the cap tipping fee, there was at least originally an intention to, to raise that. The over the cap fee will increase from $80 a ton to $90 a ton in the first year and then to $100 a ton in year two. And meanwhile, the normal tipping rate will go from 47 in fiscal '22 to 54 in fiscal '23. All of this points towards one solution, and that is every ton we tip that's recycled costs us nothing. We have to haul it there, the same as ever, anything else. But when it gets there, it doesn't cost us 47 or 80 or 90. It costs us nothing. So recycling is, there's just no way to, there's just no way to beat it.
If you won't, if you won't do it for the planet, do it for your pocketbook at least. Come on, people.
Go. I would entertain a motion to authorize the town administrator on behalf of the town to sign the document.
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Mataronis, second by Counselor Wallach to authorize the administrator. Is there any further discussion? A roll call vote then, Counselor Gollumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Counselor Mush and this I. The next item of business is a request from the American Legion to hold the annual Memorial Day Parade and Exercises on May 31st, 2021.
Motion to approve. Okay, Andrew got it.
The motion is made by Counselor Mataronis, second by Counselor Moore to approve. And I would tell you that we will need to forward that request to the Department of Business Regulation for their concurrence in accordance with the COVID rules. I anticipate that, that we will receive such concurrence, but that, that will be a step we need to take. Is there any discussion? A roll call vote, Counselor Gollumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
And Mush and I. The final item in new business is a question from the, regarding fireworks and the fireworks celebration. And basically it's saying, what are our options, if any, due to continued COVID limitations? I suppose the question to be, is there an appetite for scheduling a fireworks demonstration in 2021?
I mean, I, I like fireworks just as much as the next guy, but everything I'm hearing this COVID is seeming to subsiding like it should be because people are not adherent to wearing masks and whatnot. So I wouldn't want to get into a contract with a fire, fireworks company and then find out we can't have it because of COVID regulations. Obviously, everybody knows what a crowd that brings out. So I think it would be kind of reckless for the town to host that.
I, I, I kind of go along with Gary. The only thing I caveat to that is if we could make an arrangement with the fireworks coming contingent upon COVID protocols, that we could actually do it. I mean, if we, if they're going to want their money one way or the other, then I'd, I'd say then let's not take the chance. But if, if they're willing to be flexible to say, hey, you know, we understand the COVID protocol. We'll, we understand, we won't take your money if you can't do it, then, then I'd be for it.
Company we have worked with, actually, both the companies who have been competitors are from New Hampshire. And we could have that exploratory conversation. So I, I am acquainted with those people since we did it the last time we had fireworks. And we can make, I'll make that phone call and just see what the, what the market will bear. Will, will, the other reality is they can, they responded to us on fairly short notice. So to Gary's point, where we defined in July that things are improving, we could say, hey, we'd like to do this in August. And we could probably make that happen if we, if we found that the, the time was better. There is funding in the budget for it in the recreation line. So it's a, it is a matter of, you know, if we could pull it off on short notice, perhaps we.
I'll make a motion that the council president looks into that and gets back to us at a future town council meeting with his thoughts or what he, what he finds out.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Counselor Mataronis, second by Counselor Gollumbeski to have council president investigate and report back at appropriate time. Any discussion? The roll call vote then, Counselor Gollumbeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. Next item of business is a letter received from R.L. Flunders Tavern and Restaurant. And, uh, one of the owners, Roger Wilkie, is on the call with us. This, this letter requests two things. Uh, one, outside seating uh, on a temporary, as a temporary solution to accommodate those who are still not comfortable with inside seating due to COVID nineteen. And I will tell you that in response to that, and in keeping with the statewide emphasis on increasing business opportunity, I have given him, under the authority you granted me, that temporary agreement. And I would like to ratify that or hear your comments on that tonight. The second is, he's also requested that the council consider a more permanent solution of a stone terrace on the backside of the bar area for those same sixty patrons. And that would be a, a, a permanent solution. I would suggest that that is a separate matter that we would discuss. We discussed it tonight and make decision on, but it is not, those two ought not be tied together. I'd further tell you that I put no constraint on the temporary solution. And I would suggest to you that in the interest of it being, uh, seasonal, that we, that we put a limitation on the order of six months, which would take us out to October. Uh, but that temporary solution could remain in place. And, uh, with that, I'll, I'll, um, ask what questions you might have.
Bob, um, I'd like the other councils to bring consent, uh, number three forward because that's your response to Mr. Wilkie. Um, if you haven't done so already, to see that what Bob's response is. I'm in concurrent with Bob to allow this to go forward because it's a COVID-related circumstance. Uh, right. As we all know, Roger just bought this facility and because he can't have the crowds, he's gonna need to survive. I think it's a good thing. We asked him to fix the bathrooms. My understanding that he has, he's making a bathroom in there. And, uh, so he, he did what we asked him to do. And the temporary tent is a small tent, twenty by thirty. And so I would, uh, ratify Bob's letter with the understanding that it's going to be for six months only. And he has to adhere to all state and local regulations.
Um, I'm, I'll second, but I'm assuming I'm second, making a second on the first part, not the permanent part.
No, I think the permanent part, he's gonna, um, have to go through, uh, planning and zoning for that because I think it's going to may affect his parking, but that was my understanding. I did talk to him today. I guess that part is, he's talking, that's going to be on the south side, so it won't have much effect on parking, but I don't think we have the, uh, ability to grant that top launch. I think he has to go through the channels to get that.
So, so my assumption is correct. This is for the temporary, ratifying Bob's authorization of him doing it.
Correct.
If I could be clear, let's have, this motion should be to withdraw item three from the consent calendar. Is it item three? Yeah. Withdraw item three from the consent calendar. Offer approval of the town council president's actions to grant such authority and to apply a six-month, uh, uh, termination to disapproval.
Bob, is that, is that in form of the motion?
That, that is the motion that I, I'm, I'm wrapping together the things that you, you did in your, and you're, um, bringing this forward. You, you removed the item from the consent calendar. You then, uh, proposed that we ratify it and you proposed that it have a six-month, uh, termination period.
So that would be my motion.
That is.
If I have to amend my second to fit all that, then so I'm.
I just want to wrap up what, what the motion needs to reflect is, is those are the things that, that, uh, were part of, uh, Mr. Mataronis's. Now, any discussion on that? All right. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Counselor Dolomeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Uh, Mush and I. As to the second then, um, is there? Let me, let me just say that I'll refer the process of gaining approval would be through, as has been said in discussion, the, the building official, the zoning official. And, uh, ask if the administrator kind of oversee that in case there are some ancillary things that we need to bring in with respect to either COVID or, or other, uh, requirements. I, I, I don't see any at this point. It looks like a straightforward, um, zoning and then building issue. Is that, do you agree with that, uh, administrator?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
When there is an expansion of a Class BV license to expand the, uh, front of what they're going to be operating under, that's a hearing of the Board of License, License Commissioners. Um, so, so you'll have to schedule a hearing at some point for that, once he's ready. But in order to get ready, he would have to draft plans and, and put everything together and then determine with the zoning official, if there is any need to go before planning board. I, I don't think automatically he has to go to the planning board. Um, it just depends on whether or not he has any waivers he needs from zoning board.
Okay.
He may be as simple as just going in front of the building official.
Well, he has to come back to you for a.
Right.
Hearing.
Right, right.
But, but if he's not looking to seek any waivers for setbacks or lock cover
Right.
like that, then, then he may not need those other boards at all. He may only need a remiss trance hearing from the, uh, Board of License Commissioners.
Okay. And, and that would nominally coincide with where we're, we're talking at the six-month point.
It, it could at any time. We need like a monthly way in order to do the advertising.
Okay. Um, so. You need a motion on that. Where, where are we on?
I think we have a motion on the table in a second.
And I have.
I missed the, I missed the actual motion and second.
Statement of the motion. Okay.
Yeah. I, I know you said that you wanted to have the building official, the zoning official and the administrator work.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we don't have.
I didn't hear anyone make a motion in a second.
You're right. You're right. We don't have a motion on that one.
Do anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to do whatever Bob wants.
That's dangerous.
That's a good, that's a good motion, Anya.
That is exceptionally dangerous.
Getting that Mercedes, Bob, are you?
Uh, no, I move that, uh, that we, uh, refer this to the administrator to, uh, to shepherd it through whatever process it needs to go through.
Second.
And you can say that more articulately.
That's a great, that's a great one. The motion then is maiden, made by Counselor Wallach, seconded by Counselor Mataronis to refer the matter to the administrator to shepherd it through the required process for the applicant. Is there any discussion? A roll call vote then Counselor Dolomeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. Thank you. Um, the next item is a, um, communication item. And it is a request for renewal of the Victor, Victor Ling license for Sakana Events, who does business as Blaminas Catering.
Does the town administrator have any information on this? I was always thinking she was, uh, worked up by the Cole Walker's fruit stand.
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
That's the one coming next.
Okay. So she has another facility at South Shore Road?
No.
That's her home.
Yeah, that's, it's a catering business run out of her home.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. I'll make a motion to approve with all, uh, town, state and local ordinance adhered to.
Is there a second?
Yes, there was. It was me.
Oh. Motion made by Counselor Mataronis, seconded by Counselor Dolomeski. Any discussion? Uh, Counselor Dolomeski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. The next is a request from, uh, the same entity, Sakana Events, uh, doing businesses, Wilma, uh, doing business as Wilmas at Walker's. Uh, for a Victor Ling and holiday sales license.
Motion to approve with all state and local regulations adhered to.
Second again.
Motion made by, Mataronis, seconded by Dolomeski. Discussion. Uh, roll call. Counselor Dolomeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. The next is a letter from the Rhode Island, uh, Division of Statewide Planning, initiating the process of preparing a new Rhode Island State Transportation Improvement Program, STIP. Uh, due to funding limitations, the STIP will not include solicitation for new projects.
We're already in the STIP program currently.
We are, and we are not in the near term. So we are anxious to move our projects to the left, uh, to an earlier, uh, uh, timeframe. Uh, the chances of that, I suspect, are relatively small. But nonetheless, we have, we have the, uh, the right senator working that issue and, um, and, uh, he is aware of our need to, uh, and has, as part of his visit that the administrator set up, we not only toured Adamsville, we also toured the commons and, uh, looked at the condition of the roads there. And, uh, he's got the message and, uh, what he would like from us is a continued discussion and conversations. So he's aware of where we stand, especially with respect to any, um, potential application of, uh, of American Recovery Act funds or that sort of thing. That, does that sum it up, uh, administrator, or was there something else that we wanted to make?
You, you've done it very well. And, uh, we were very thankful that the senator did have the opportunity to walk, not write, but walk the commons, you know, so, uh, he could feel what it was like to walk the road.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that the town administrator, uh, keep on top of this, um, with the senator to try to see if we can move any of these projects along a little bit quicker. I know he's already, uh, probably doing that, but I'd like to have it on record as a motion, please.
Second.
Motion is made by Mataronis, seconded by Dolomeski to, uh, uh, have the administrator remain on top of this matter. Uh, any discussion? Um, a roll call vote. Counselor Dolomeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. Thank you. The next is a request from the housing hotline for the council to proclaim April is Fair Housing Month. I have no concern about this, except that the draft, uh, is not in the format that I would prefer. And so I would entertain a motion that, uh, if you concur with designation, that you direct the, direct me to create an appropriate, uh, uh, resolution on behalf of the council for declaring, uh, the month to be, uh, Fair Housing.
Don't move.
No, second.
Motion's made by Mataronis, seconded by Dolomeski. Any discussion? Uh, a roll call. Counselor Dolomeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
And I. The next is a annual request, which we, we, we receive from, um, the Armenian National Committee, in which they ask us to fly their flag, which is this year on Saturday, the twenty-fourth.
What should allow the flag to be flown on town hall?
So. I'm sorry, second was.
Andrew.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion made to approve Counselor Mataronis and seconded by, uh, Counselor Moore. Any discussion? A roll call vote. Uh, Dolomeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And then a request from Republican Town Committee to use Veterans Field on June sixth from ten AM to two PM for an antique carcha.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mataronis, seconded by Counselor Wallach. Any discussion? Roll call. Counselor Dolomeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Or.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. Thank you. Then the consent calendar with the exception of number three, which we have already discussed.
Motion to place consent ca- calendar on file unless anybody wants to pull anything for consideration.
Second.
Discussion on that. Uh, vote. Counselor Dolomeski.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. Finally, the payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills as listed.
I'll second it.
Made by Mataronis, seconded by Dolomeski to pay the bills as listed. Any discussion? Roll call vote of that matter. Counselor Dolomeski.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Moore.
Aye.
Counselor Wallach.
Aye.
Mush and I. That completes it. Ladies and gentlemen, having no other business before the council, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your participation.
Thank you and good night.
Bye, good night.